Everybody ready? Great. I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting close session. The time is 5:36. City Clerk Duarte, would you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Horn?
Present.
Councilmember Sosa?
Present.
Mayor Protem Trujillo?
Here.
And Mayor Fromeda.
Present. Okay, now is the time for public comment. And I don't need to remind too many speakers about keeping your comments related to closed session items. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written correspondence regarding the closed session item?
We did not, Mayor.
Okay, I can see we have a speaker. Please come forward.
Good evening. Another lawsuit that we'll try to squash as much as possible, that the information won't come out, but there will be more. I can promise you there's more coming down and more investigations down the pike. So be ready for them. They're coming.
Thank you for that. I will make a motion to close public comment. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So ordered by the mayor. The city council will now recess to closed session under the following authorities. Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Sofia Gonzalez versus City of Downey, Los Angeles Superior Court, case number 21STCV2514. We will now recess to closed session. The time is 5:38.
Excuse me.
Is my name on there? Oh, okay.
No.
Okay, good. Keep my name out of the lawsuit. Keep my name out of the lawsuits.
Metal Hook the Version. Tim, your mic's hot, your mic's hot.
Okay, looks like we are ready. Good evening, everybody. Ms. Interim City Attorney, would you please report the closed session action?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. The City Council convened a closed session this evening to discuss the one matter of business on the published agenda, which is a one matter of existing litigation, Sofia Gonzalez versus the City of Downey. The City Council discussed this matter and took no reportable action. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Interim City Attorney. I will now call to order the regular City Council meeting, open session. The time is 6:35. City Clerk Duarte, would you please take role?
Councilmember Horn?
Present.
Councilmember Sosa?
Present.
Mayor Protem Trujillo?
Here.
And Mayor Prometa?
Present. At this time, I would like to invite Pastor Chris Reyes from Calvary Chapel Downey to conduct the invocation, if we can please stand.
Excited to be here. It's an honor for me to be here this evening and be able to start the evening with the invocation prayer. As you guys all might have heard, we are doing an event here for the city and community for Fourth of July in just a couple of weeks. So it's an honor to be here tonight. Why don't we pray? Father in heaven, we are gathered together in your name. You alone can guide us and teach us the way that we must go and how we are to pursue it. So this evening, Lord, I pray for our mayor, our city council, city hall, and different department staff, police, fire, and first responders. Lord, I pray that you would be with them, direct them, protect them, fill them with wisdom and good judgment to make decisions which honor you and bless the people of Downey whom they are called to serve. All this we ask of you and in your mighty name we pray, knowing that you sit in an ultimate place of power and angels and authorities and powers have been made subject to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And at this time, I would like to ask Mayor Protem Trujillo to lead us in the flag salute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you would please face our flag, put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. I would like to welcome you to this City Council meeting. And at this time, I would like to start us off with also City Council member announcements, requests for future agenda items, conference and meeting reports. I will start to my left, my far left, with Councilmember Tim Horn.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to report that I attended the Public Works Breakfast, honored for the entire week. We honored the Public Works Week. I participated in the Student Government Day at City Hall. I accepted an invitation to the Quanis Club meeting, noon meeting, where I heard our city manager speak. I also attended the Veterans Buried at the Downey Municipal Cemetery during Memorial Day and honored our fallen veterans. I attended the Whole Child 65th Anniversary Event. I participated in the Downey, excuse me, Downey Improvement Tour with my fellow colleague, Protem Mayor Trujillo. And can I mention the names or just the administration? Members of administration? I attended the West Downey Little League Closing Ceremony. I participated in a Gangs Out of Downey Meeting. I attended at the acceptance as a guest from Councilmember Sosa, the Quanis Luautnite, which I thoroughly enjoyed. And I wanted to remind all our District One residents that there will be a town hall meeting at the Columbia Space Center on June 22nd from 6:00 to 7:30. And I wanted to add something or ask our city manager a question, which maybe we can get the answer here. Years ago, the Community Development Department used to offer low-income homeowners the opportunity to receive repairs on their homes by the city, and then we recouped the city's cost when the property was either transferred or sold. And I don't know if you want to research it or ask our department head here to respond.
We can look into that and get back to you.
Okay.
I'll second my colleague's request.
And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Horn. Mayor Protem Trujillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to your council meeting. Happy Pride Month. I want to thank Supervisor Han and County Assessor Prank for the invitations to participate in some countywide activities to commemorate Pride Month. I had the opportunity to attend Student Government Day, the monthly League of Cities SoCal Division Meeting, the Greek Festival, always a great weekend with community, the Gangs Out of Downey Meeting. I had a chance to visit the new restaurant at the mall, Toast. Please support our new restaurants. The Whole Child Gala. Today, I met with the board with the Downey Association of Realtors. We've been working diligently on the budget. It looks like in two weeks, hopefully, we'll be able to ratify another potential balanced budget, which shows that we're doing well fiscally. If you have any questions, concerns about the budget, now's the time to reach out to us to make sure that we can try to include things that you want to see happen in the city. Everything has a price tag. Had a really good tour with our city manager, Public Works, and Code Enforcement, Community Development, Interim Director in District One. District One, for many of you that may not know, I believe, is the district that has been most impacted by the homeless issue. They have more encampments in District One, not that we have many in the city. District One is also home to the industrial corridor, an area bordered by Foster Road and Woodruff Boulevard. We were out there for a couple of hours with my colleague, Councilmember Horn, who represents the first district. And there are some beautiful neighborhoods that abut the industrial corridors, which, quite frankly, has been neglected. I was surprised when one member of the team, we got to one specific intersection, Imperial Highway and Woodruff, and this person said, "It looks like this intersection has not been touched in 30 years." And so that was alarming, but I could assure you that we're going to get to work on improving, not just the entire city, but right now, I believe that District One needs a little more of our attention. And so I'm glad that we took the tour. Future agenda items. I would like staff to bring back the SB 9 ordinance specifically looking at the LEED requirements when it comes to building ADUs. I believe if you're building two or more, it triggers a LEED requirement. I'd like for us to reconsider that. So if we could have that item in the agenda, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I would like staff to make an assessment of Rio San Gabriel. Do we indeed have a gopher infestation? I'm hearing that there are some injuries that are happening because, happening because of holes in the ground they're being created by gophers. I'd like to know what we're doing about it, if in fact it is a problem. And I would like to know when we could get an update on what efforts we're doing to discuss fentanyl and to start a citywide campaign to bring attention to this poison that is permeating our streets. I'd like to know sooner rather than later when we're going to start working on that, on this campaign. So hopefully, we get a timeline going. That concludes my report and my request for items. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Trujillo. And definitely, I will second your request for Rio San Gabriel and the gopher situation. And I'll have also a quick update on the fentanyl that you've requested. Councilmember Sosa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nice to see everybody here tonight. Nice turnout. I'll keep my comments brief. I attended quite a few events, but I'll just mention a few of them, so I don't bore you with my list. I did attend the Warren High Senior Banquet for avid students. And my wife and I are old Warren Bears. We have two sons over there right now, so anything that has to do with Warren, I try to be there. And you know what? I am encouraged by our youth. I think the future's bright with our youth. Just good stuff to be excited about, and we have some great kids coming out of high school now and ready to conquer the world. I did participate in a city and school district task force meeting along with my colleague, Mayor Prometa. And I've always felt that a strong strategic relationship between the city and the school district is vital for our community. And walked away from that meeting feeling very confident that we're going to accomplish some good things for our youth. I also did attend the Memorial Day Remembrance Day Ceremony at the Downey Cemetery. Beautiful ceremony, huge turnout. It was great to see everybody there and, you know, allows us to remember why we celebrate Memorial Day. I too attended the Downey Greek Festival. That's a staple in this community. My family and I, we make it a point to experience that every year, and it's just a lot of fun. I did attend a job fair by Selico, which I am a board member of. That was just a couple of weeks ago in the city of Bellflower. There were over 60 employers present. Get ready, the next one's going to be in the city of Downey, and we're shooting for at least 80 employers. I was speaking with Assemblywoman Blanca Bachecco, who you all know. We're trying to get more municipal and state employer groups out there as well. So we're going to go big in the city of Downey and have a big job fair here. So and also, I did attend the Public Works Breakfast, where we honored the, they all, to me, they're the ones who make this city what it is. They're the unsung heroes, the guys behind the scenes, really, you know, keeping our city beautiful. And it was great to be there to honor our Public Works employees and staff. Well, that concludes my comments. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sosa. Good evening again, everybody. I do want to give a warm welcome to certain people in the audience. We've got the Executive Director of the Downey Chamber of Commerce, Michael Calvert. Thank you for joining us. We also have the President of the Chamber of Commerce in Downey, Carmen Padilla. Thank you for joining us tonight. I know we also have youth commissioners in the audience. They will be recognized in the program in just a little bit. Thank you for joining us tonight. And we also have a very special individual that we will be recognizing as well, and that is our former mayor and dear friend, Rick Rodriguez. We also have a Public Works Commissioner, Dorothy Pemberton, in the audience. Thank you for joining us tonight. And I will give you a quick report. Certainly, since the last time we met, together with my council colleagues, we've had busy, busy couple of weeks. I too attended the Student Government Day here in the city, and we had a great turnout. As Councilmember Sosa indicated, our future is bright. We have students from Warren, Downey, St. Pius, and Matthias join us. They're part of the Youth Commission, but also they're part of their ASBs, the Associated Student Bodies, in their respective schools. And Student Government Day went very well. I do want to extend a great thank you and my appreciation to everybody involved. Jason with Parks and Rec, as well as the staff and all of the individuals that were part of that day. Thank you. I know we had the students visit and tour the various departments, so thank you, police, fire, our city manager, and everybody that is involved. Again, it takes all of us working together. I also participated in the, I didn't attend the Warren Avid Senior Banquet. We divided and conquered. I attended the Downey Avid Senior Banquet. And again, it was a pleasure to see all of the students graduating and have been successful in that program. We celebrated and recognized National Public Works Week. And again, you are, our Public Works Department, you are really the heroes of our city. You help make our city run efficiently every single day, and we appreciate that. I also wanted to highlight that on Friday, May 26th, KCal 9 and CBS 2, they did a SoCal Spotlight in our own city of Downey, and they did three segments, not one, but three segments. The first, it was an interview with your mayor. And the second segment was at the Rio Hondo Golf Club with Jason. And the third segment was at the Columbia Memorial Space Center with the Director Ben Dico. And it was phenomenal. Those segments aired throughout the day, highlighting what a great city Downey is. And I just wanted to, if you have an opportunity, go back and take a look at the archives for that. It was really a great opportunity to highlight Downey. We also attended the Special Memorial Day Program at the Downey Cemetery. We did, I also attended the Whole Child 65th Anniversary Jubilee, and the Whole Child has, as you know, an additional space here in the city of Downey. And this is to help families and individuals at risk of homelessness, and that is a very great cause. I also, we also held a special City Council meeting here last week on Thursday and discussed the upcoming budget. Our biggest priority as a city and as a council is to ensure that we have a balanced budget and that we prioritize what are the projects for the coming years. There's been, I know, swirl around social media, and some people have asked us about, you know, regarding the Downey archway. And I do want to let you know that funding for arts and public places can only be utilized for that purpose. And so as we look at that potential Downey archway, that is where the funding will come from. Regarding our roads and the infrastructure improvements, I do want to remind and perhaps those residents that are watching us via YouTube, that in 2021, during my first mayoral year, the council approved the allocation of over $30 million to street repaving rehabilitation improvement projects. This is a 10-year project. And over the last fiscal year, over 31 miles of streets have been repaved and rehabilitated. I know that we are not moving fast enough, quick enough for a lot of our residents, but do know that there is a plan in place, and the streets in various segments of our city are being looked at for repaving and rehabilitation. This will continue. I do have some asks for the staff, and that is, again, we have seen, as many other cities have, this is not unique to the city of Downey, is an increase in transient activity. And I would like, again, to ask our staff for additional patrols for Orange Estates neighborhoods and around the Legacy Church for increased transient activity. Also, I would like staff to provide an update on the traffic study that was conducted off of telegraph regarding the proposed new Chick-fil-A site on the Fronton slot. I know that there was a traffic study conducted, but I'm not sure that we have been given a report in whether that study that was conducted was done appropriately. I know that I've continued to hear complaints or concerns from residents regarding that proposed Chick-fil-A site and the traffic that that would create in that particular corner, considering the school is just about a block and a half north of that. Also, around neighborhoods, and we see this all the time, and I do want to say thank you to the Police Department, because we are trying to look at the increased speeding, and we continue to do speed enforcement activities. But around our neighborhoods, we are also, we're also seeing motorists skip stop signs. And sometimes, these are quiet neighborhoods. I have been notified on multiple occasions of a few intersections where pedestrians have almost been hit on their evening or afternoon walks with their children, and this is not acceptable. People fail People failing to stop at a designated stop sign is not acceptable. The intersection that has been mentioned is Suva and Tweedy, as well as Maddock and DeCosta, and as well as Reeves and Quill, believe it or not. We have discussed adding code enforcement patrols throughout our neighborhoods for unkept yards, cars parked on lawns, large tents being erected on front lawns. That is against city code, by the way. I know that we are in the season of celebrations and graduation parties, et cetera. But I just want to ask staff to, perhaps we need to also, in our social media handles, highlight what the city codes are in regards to large tents on front lawns. Sometimes our newcomers to our city are not aware that we have certain city codes regarding that. Also regarding code enforcement, and I say this, we had this discussion last Thursday during our budget session, but I'm saying this for purposes of information for all. I want to ensure that everybody understands the city of Downey continues, we want to continue to keep our property values and the safety of our neighborhoods and the beautification of our neighborhoods. Therefore, we will continue, and I will ask staff to continue to have code enforcement patrols on unkept yards, cars parked on lawns, and as I said, illegal dumping, excessive trash accumulation in and around shopping strips. That is a responsibility of the owner of that particular place. But also, we're seeing flashing lights around businesses and business windows pop up in different parts of our city. And I know that we need to keep an eye on that. That'll do it for me. Thank you. I want to wish all of you fathers and father figures a Happy Father's Day this weekend. Safe, celebrate safely. And I also want to acknowledge the celebration of Flag Day tomorrow. And we will be recognizing the Army's birthday at the next council meeting. With that, that will conclude my comments, and we have some presentations to get to. Oh, yes, thank you. City Manager, I know you have some report, and I forgot to tell everybody, part of my report is we do have a FatherCon, we have Fathers Reading in Space, and it is coming up Friday, June 16th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Columbia Space Center. And this is really a wonderful free event where fathers read, kids thrive. There will be authors, activities, refreshments, raffles, and more. So this Friday at 4:00 p.m. at Columbia Space Center. And City Manager, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick recaps on the comments that I heard today, just want to make sure we got everything captured. Efforts to deal with fentanyl, I think Mayor Proton mentioned that one. Didn't hear a second on that, but we had discussed at the prior meeting, so that will be coming as a future agenda item. Additional patrols around Orange Estates area, we talked about the chief about that, that's being taken care of. We are happy to provide a traffic study report about the new Chick-fil-A site. Just needed a second from somebody on the council, so make sure that's something you want us to work on. I see that there, thank you. Looking at some of the stop sign areas that you identified, we'll make sure we work with the chief and get some additional patrols in that area. Happy to look at social media ways that we can advertise and let the community know about code enforcement issues and things that kind of pop up on a regular basis, so we can start advertising how to avoid interactions with the city on some of those issues and to make sure that we're compliant with our codes. And yes, we are continuing to work with our code enforcement team to patrol the neighborhoods, looking at yards, illegal dumping, flashing lights. And we'll, as council calls last week, we were authorized an additional code enforcement staff as part of the budget, so we'll be continuing to beef that up and be out there in the community, making sure that the community looks good. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I did want to mention that during the city and school district task force meeting we had recently, again, the city and the school district are completely different entities. We have a great relationship that we value. And as Councilmember Sosa, we met with Dr. John Garcia and members of the school board, and we did discuss, Mayor Proton, we did discuss fentanyl. And we will be partnering with Dr. Garcia, and he will have an event coming up this fall where the city and the school district will be joining forces to continue that education on fentanyl. But again, more to come on that. Let's go ahead for presentations.
Good evening, everybody. I have the distinct pleasure tonight of recognizing someone that is very special to this community. People have served this council and have served for many years and have served their community, but for me, none like the man that I will speak about. And this man came to office, and he was mayor. He served mayor in 2018. Rick Rodriguez is the founder of RMI International, an international security firm that operates in 18 states and up until recently in three countries. Rick Rodriguez founded his company in 1996 after a lengthy career in private security. Rick is a past president of the Downey Chamber of Commerce. He was a past president of Gangs Out of Downey. His volunteer work included being part, being chairman of the Downey's Emergency Preparance Committee. Member, and he's currently the president of the Downey Los Amigos Cahuanes. He's a member of the Downey Veterans Memorial Committee. He's a chaplain within LA County Sheriff's Department, and he's a founder of the Living Help Tree, the Living Tree Foundation, which helps returning combat veterans and families. Rick Rodriguez is the son of migrant farmworkers from Texas. He grew up in El Monte, California. He and his wife, Lupe, have seven children and nine grandchildren. He served as council member and mayor of the city, as I said, as mayor in 2018, just as I had come on the council. And Rick's love for this community and passion for service is unlike anything I've ever seen. When I look at him and his servant heart, he believes in not only giving back to this community, but serving with his heart. And while there, you know, there were some health complications during his year as mayor, Rick made sure that not only did he work here Monday through Friday, you know, he stepped down as CEO of his security company, of RMI, to be able to be in elected office. He wanted to make sure that there would be no conflicts of interest of any kind. Rick is a man of integrity, a man that I've gotten to know over the years. He has been, he was not only a council colleague, but a mentor to me. And his service to this community is really unmatched. He, as I've indicated, he has been, in whatever committee and in area of service, he gives not only 1,000%, but then some more. And his heart is not only for the veterans and families, but also for the children who were having problems graduating from high school. And he, during his time in office, and still to this day, he wants to be a mentor, a father figure for those kids that are having trouble graduating from high school. During his time in office, he started various committees, of which we continue today. One of them was the clergy council. Rick wanted to make sure that local government and faith-based organizations would be coordinating and would be talking to each other. And he did it very successfully. Up until the last year, that clergy council was taken out of local government, and he is now taking it on under the umbrella of his foundation. He was also instrumental in assisting with the veteran reintegration program. And many people do things for recognition, and many people do things for the ego and for the pat on the back. Rick Rodriguez does it because it is the right thing to do. And he is a man that is humble, and I just wish that we had more like him. And I am honored to, when I think about a legacy, and I think about a legacy of service and being a man of honor, I think of Rick Rodriguez. And I think about the example that he has left all of us on council. And he's a man of faith, and he's a man that many of us call on for prayer and a word of wisdom. And he also was instrumental in getting the "Welcome to Downey, Home of the Carpenters" signs and signage. And I know that he was called upon to be the chairman of that committee for next year. And so without further ado, would you all help me in recognizing former Mayor Rick Rodriguez? Mayor's Legacy Award is presented to Rick Rodriguez in recognition of your outstanding citizenship and activities enhancing the community of Downey. Your exemplary efforts and accomplishments have been of enormous value to our community and have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place for all. Thank you, Rick Rodriguez, for being a champion for what is good and honorable in our community, given this day, the 13th day of June, 2023. And here is your challenge coin, because he's known to give challenge coins.
I just so happen to have one.
Here we go. And we will, we'll take a photo, but, well, let's have you say after words.
So, man, what a speech. I hope I can live up to that, those words from Claudia. But I wanted to just share something briefly. You know, when I was in office, it was probably the best time of my life. I really loved being here. I loved working with the staff. I loved working with the community, as she mentioned, the children, our veterans, our dogs and Siaka. I really loved it. That was my first passion, because I had already had the experience of starting a business with my family and being successful with it, and having all seven kids work together with my wife and I. We built this huge company that we're so proud of, and more importantly, we're proud of our kids that decided to say, we can do it, and they kind of ran with it. And so today, I want to thank the mayor first off, but I want to tell a quick little story about a young guy. You actually just noticed, I saw him in the office and the audience. So the other day, I was talking to Councilman Horn and Councilman Sosa about running for office, and why do you do it? Why do you run for office? And so I thought about it again and again, and I'll tell you why I ran for office. I'll tell you why. It's not about my family, my children, or getting the fame picture in the paper. It's kind of about this guy right here. And so, oh, I'd say about eight, nine years ago, this little kid that came up to me, and he came up to me, and he right up here, and I sat right there, Councilor Hatcher Sosa sitting, and he said, he says, "One day I want to run for office." And I said, "Okay." I said, "You want to sit in my chair?" He said, "Sure." And he sat in my chair, and we took pictures, and this day I have this picture of this little chubby little kid sitting in my chair. And then later on, he grew up, and he wanted to go to high school. And fortunate for me, I sit on the Board of Directors for the Pius and Matthias High School. And so his mom asked me, "Could you please help me get a referral for him?" So I wrote a letter of referral to our board, and he got scholarship into Pius and Matthias, and he became president, president of the school, of his class, ASB. And then he was in Israel, and I was on vacation, and his mom called me again. She says, "My son's applying to all these different colleges, and would you help him and be a reference for him?" And so I was. And now what college are you going to? Loyola Marymount. So this young boy here, that was that little fifth grader back in the day, is now graduated to top of the class of Pius and Matthias, that guy right there. In the newspaper, please, yes, please. A few weeks ago, when I saw this, I told my wife about that story, and I said to myself, "Wow, this is what happens when we pay attention. This is what happens when we see somebody with a twinkle in their eye that says, 'I'm going to do something better than myself.'" And that's really what running for office and being elected is. He's off to college, and after college, he'll become an attorney. Had he become an attorney, he wants to run for office in District 1. And so, so I say that because if, you know, I always tell my employees, "You think you're giving, you're working hard enough, you're not." I tell my children, "If you think you're putting more, enough time into the company and working hard, you're not. We can never give enough." And fortunately for me, I was able to give four years of my life to this city as an elected official, and 30 other years being a volunteer. But I love volunteering. Even now that I'm retired, I do more, I think I do more things in the volunteer world than I did in my job. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Man, my wife, she called all of our family. You're lucky there's only a couple of our kids show up, because if five more kids showed up, we'd fill the audience. But yeah, you know, I wouldn't be here without my wife's support. She's the one that really, I would just sit there and watch. As I watched the kids roll in, and friends roll in, I said, "Thank you," because she's the one behind my back, went to them and said, "Hey, show up tonight." So thank you, honey. Thank you for doing that. And thank you, Madam Mayor.
This is another.
I'm going to sell these on the corner. I got a bunch of them.
But, and yes, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that former Mayor Rodriguez continues serving this community by being on multiple boards, and he's definitely well sought out because of his passion for service, but because of your integrity and the man you are. So thank you.
Thank you.
Let's take a photo and bring the family photo.
Let's take a photo and bring the family forward. Can we have Johnny Matthew Canto come up? I'm going to talk about you, John. Johnny, stand here, stand here. Johnny Matthew Canto graduated from Downey High School in 2018. When Johnny turned 18, he enlisted with the United States Army right out of high school. It was a surprise to his family, but they were proud of his courage, sacrifice, and his accomplishments at such a young age. Johnny was tasked with the 92nd Engineer Battalion, which was stationed at Fort Stewart, Georgia. He was awarded with numerous certificates during his search and rescue missions. As all soldiers, they are away from family and friends during their service. This was a challenging time for Johnny, as he's very close to his family, especially during the pandemic. It made it that much more difficult for them to see each other. Now that Johnny has served his four years with the U.S. Army, he's back home and enjoys hanging out with his family and friends. Johnny is now in school to be an electrician, and his family continues to be beaming with pride as he continues his journey. Well, today, Johnny Matthew Canto, on behalf of the citizens of Downey, and in recognition of your tireless efforts to the United States Army, your dedication to our country and the fight for our freedoms throughout the world is commendable. We pay special tribute to you for your military service in the United States of America, given the 13th day of June 2013. And we have this special plaque that Downey saluting your service and with recognition and appreciation for your bravery, efforts in serving in the United States Army. Thank you for your service, Johnny. Would you like to say a few words?
I would like to thank my, my family in the back here. Everyone that's here, I've, you know, they've always given me nothing but support, and I have the utmost love for them. And for everyone that is here and not here, nothing but love. Thank you. Thank you.
There you go. This is a challenge coin. Continue to do great work.
Thank you.
And this is a pin. If we can get the council clocks. We're going to take a photo. We're going to take a picture with the council, and then if the family wants to step forward as well to be part of the photo. Thank you. I think we need, we need a little bit on the outside. We need to make mom better. We can get a step forward. There we go. Mom can come over. Yes. Okay, is everybody?
We're okay.
Got to make sure everybody shows. Look for a window.
I just slipped in here.
It looks good.
Standing at the podium.
Thank you. I know you're a pro. Take care. Let's see. I do. I do. Okay. Big congratulations to our, to our service member. At this time, we will continue moving on with our presentations, and we do have a brief presentation for recognizing, recognizing our outgoing youth commissioners. We have three in the audience here today, this evening. If I can have them, please join me in the front. It is Isaac Donado, Jordan Coriel, and is it Zenix? Jinx. Okay. Well, let me tell you all, the Downey Youth Commission is comprised of 15 students appointed by the city council. This past year, the youth commission set goals for themselves to accomplish, such as planning the annual Student Government Day, which approximately 60 students from Downey, Warren, and St. Pius were in attendance to learn about the way municipal government works. They also collaborated with the Downey PD to create traffic safety videos to further educate the public and their peers on practices they can establish to further increase safety during high-peak traffic times, such as during school drop-off and pickup. Before me, we have three, well, we actually have five, but a couple of them couldn't make it tonight. We have three outgoing commissioners who are future teachers, lawyers, and pilots. They have dedicated their term to our community, and we thank them for their service. I wish them much, much success in their future endeavors. To my immediate left, I have Isaac Donado, who former Mayor Rick Rodriguez pointed out earlier. He is, will be attending Loyola Marymount. His major will be political science and pre-law, and his career goal is to be a lawyer and a politician. Big round of applause for him. Next to him is Jordan Coriel, who graduated from Downey High School. He will be attending also Loyola Marymount University, and his major is political science. Jordan's career goal is to be a teacher. God bless him for that. And last, but certainly not least, is Ms. Jimenez Jones. I don't want to mispronounce your name. She has not graduated just yet. For the youth commissioners, they can apply throughout their four years in, in high school. She plans to major in the future, English and literature, and her career goal is to be a high school teacher. So, here we have future teachers and future lawyer and elected officials. Would you please give them a round of applause? Would you, would any of you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Claudia Fermenta. You know, this year, good evening, sorry. Good evening. My name's Isaac Donado, and I'm honored to have served this year's head chair for the youth commission. The commission really does strive to give back to our community at such a young age, implement us becoming these public servants in the future. I also wanted to give a great gratitude to Rick Rodriguez. Thank you for being such a great mentor in my life and aligning that spark of passion for public service in me, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll keep it pretty brief. I didn't think I would ever join this committee, or commission, excuse me. However, I, I, I wanted to get involved with my community, and this year was a big year for me, and I cannot thank my colleagues, America, Alejandra, Enough, the mayor, council, for setting this up and making my high school and theirs the best opportunities I can achieve. I thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you to America and Alejandra for, and the city for giving me the pleasure to serve as the youth commission and teach us ways to be public servants for the future and give us this opportunity once again. Thank you.
And I do, thank you, yes, I do, I do want to commend Jordan and his dad. They have been regular attendees at our city council meetings over the last, you know, not just year, but I think even longer than that. Even when we've had long city council meetings, here they are. So, thank you for your support and thank you for your service and your involvement with our community. Thank you all. for the next council meeting. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and take a two-minute recess. Thank you. And as I indicated, the proclamation in honor of the 248th Army Birthday will be moved for the next council meeting. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and reconvene our council meeting. And if we can please close the back doors, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene the meeting tonight. Thank you for those of you that have decided to remain with us. We had wonderful presentations and recognitions to well-deserved people. At this time, we have a public comment on agenda, consent, calendar, and non-agenda items. Thus far, I have a list of eight individuals. And if you didn't receive a number card and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room to be issued a number card by city staff. And as we've indicated before, I would like to remind members of the audience that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey municipal code prohibit any disorderly conduct or conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. Speakers who violate these rules and cause a disruption will receive one warning and then may be removed from the meeting. Violations of the rules of decorum for council meetings may also result in an administrative fine under the municipal code or citation for a misdemeanor under penal code section 403. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written public comment to be incorporated into the record?
We did, Mayor. We received three written comments regarding, regarding item number seventeen. The first written comment is from Danny Tyler. He expressed concerns regarding the establishment of preferential parking zones. The second written correspondence is from Guillermo Vazquez, inquired regarding the city's plan to address the lack of parking. And the third one is from Ruben Salazar, commented in opposition to changing preferential parking districts and expressed concerns regarding parking issues. That is all, Mayor.
Okay, I will make a motion. Can I get a second to receive and file the written public comment?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Okay, looks like we have eight individuals. Do we have any more? City Clerk?
Not us up right now, Mayor.
Let's go ahead and start with Speaker number one.
Good evening. It's unfair I have to start off every night. So, anyway. I want to comment on number eight and seven. Just so there's no doubt how much money that is going out, we got some more going out to, to a couple of groups. Number eight is the one-year term with the Downey Patriot for $75,000. Just make sure we're clear about that. $75,000 to the Downey Patriot. And in number seven, we are giving $33,000 to the Chamber of Commerce. $33,000 to the Chamber of Commerce. Those two groups are getting $108,000. Now, what do we get in return for that? What have we gotten in return for that? Well, in number seven, it says we get to promote civic, public relations, business development, and government legislation services for a one-year term. Now, what has the Chamber of Commerce done for business development? Have they ever been in here advocating to roll back taxation and regulations for our businesses so Downey can be a business-friendly environment? Not once. Not once. They've never came in here and advocated for any such thing. We have an executive director, we have a president. They have never come in here and advocated for a reduction in taxes. The Downey Chamber has had a women's empowerment conference. Has any of the women from that group ever stood up and defended women against the transgender men that are playing sports against girls and beating up on them? Not once. Have any of the women in that women's empowerment conference ever come forward here and condemned the activity of men claiming to be women going into girls' bathrooms? Especially if you have a 10-year-old daughter. Have they ever come in here and condemned that activity? No. How about at the so-called Pride picnic or parade where you got a bunch of 40-year-old dudes dressed up in thongs committing lewd acts in front of girls and boys? Have they ever come forward and condemned that activity? Not once. That's because they are part of the liberal Democrat Party, and this is what they approve of. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Speaker number two may come up.
I know the National Human Trafficking Hotline. Call 1-888-373-7888. Or text HELP to this number, 233-7333. Those who have the financial means to contribute to charity and refuse to do so should consider these words of Solomon. Whoever shuts his ears to the cry of the poor will also cry himself and not be heard. Proverbs 21:13. I ask you to consider the charity presented in the book, no longer a slumdog. To receive your free copy, call 1-800-WIN-ASIA. The poorest person living under a bridge in America is rich compared to multiplied millions in Asia. For 50 years, nine unelected men and women on the Supreme Court played God with innocent human life. They invented laws that condemned to painful deaths without trial more than 64 million babies for the crime of being inconvenient. In 1973, the United States Supreme Court's Roe versus Wade ruling forced abortion-on-demand down our nation's throat. Thanks be to almighty God, the Roe versus Wade decision has now been relegated to the dustbin of history. I recommend you watch the Kent Hovind video series on YouTube. I'll spell his name for you. K-E-N-T, last name, H-O-V-I-N-D.
Thank you for that. Speaker number three may come up.
Good evening. My name is Albert Guerrero. I live on Berkman Lane. I've been there for 43 years, and we have a problem with the street. We were here prior to, for me being here tonight. And the thing is, it's getting worse. This Saturday morning, I got up and somebody vomited on my front yard, broken glass beer cans or whatever, and it's a lot of trash, and it's getting worse. And I'm asking to your help so we can close off the street.
What, what street is this, once again?
On Berkman Lane. 90242. That's about it. And if you can help us out, would appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll have a staff talk to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night. Speaker number four may come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm currently living on a preferential parking street in the city of Downey, and I would like to remain, I would like it to remain like it is. I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer, and I shouldn't have the first right to park in front of my home. We live on a street that's right, one street over from some condominiums, and I know before we had preferential parking, we had to deal with all the following issues. Parking across your driveway and blocking your driveway, making it very difficult to get your car in and out of. Non-resident vehicles would be dropped off three or four at a time. Then those vehicles would be picked up and replaced with four more vehicles, which would take their place. Non-resident vehicles would be dropped off with an LAX shuttle picking them up. That vehicle be left there for weeks on end. The displacement of trash cans being put up on the curb with their vehicle would be parked in its place, only to be left there, and the trash, the trash truck missing in the next morning. Non-resident vehicles parked across handicapped, sideways entrances and handic, and fire hydrants. Non-resident stolen vehicles being left on our street. Non-residents in vehicles parking, eating, drinking, and playing loud music till 3:00 a.m. in the morning, then dumping the trash and drug paraphernalia on your lawn. Non-resident dumping condoms, needles, reefers, beer bottles, and fast food on resident lawns. Residents that would work late would come home and would find no place to park. Resident vehicles being broken into. Due to the increased robberies and thefts, owners are most suspicious about non-vehicles being parked there in their neighborhood, thus leading to confrontation between non-resident vehicles, occupants, and property owners. Non-resident vehicles making excessive noise when they park, doors slamming, loud exhaust from their vehicles, including arguing and fighting between the hours of 12:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. Non-resident vehicles parking has prevented the opportunity for property owners to have their street cleaned and swept because non-resident vehicles were parked there. Removing preferential parking would not only bring all these problems back, but also bring the homeless people that have vehicles or homeless people that live out of their vehicles, making this problem worse than ever. I know that we have a few streets nearby where there are RVs and vehicles of homeless people living out of their vehicles. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for that, and we'll have somebody from staff reach out to you. Thank you. Speaker number five may come up.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carla, and I'm here because we have a major problem in our, in our street. We live on Berkman Lane. Ever since Tempocantina came, there is, it's a disaster. We have no parking. You see cans open, beer bottles open, crashed everywhere. When I come from work, or my husband, or anybody there, there's no place to park, and we're kind of sick of it. I just don't understand how we could allow this to happen. I cannot tell you how many times I've called the police to report a car parked in the hydro, fire hydrant, or illegally parked on the red zone, and nothing has been done. My neighbors have come here, they collected signatures to block the street. It's a dead end. Nothing was done. They said that they couldn't, I don't know for what reason, but at this point, it's like, I just, I'm here, taking my time where I should be, at home cooking, being on my, you know, taking, doing my thing, and no, I have to come here for the fifth time just to try to be able to see if somebody could do something about it. I've called the city, the city manager, no response from him. It's like, are you guys gonna do something about it? Because this is an issue that we brought up to you guys already, and this is not stopping. I'm just sick of coming home, not having, not having a parking space for myself. Berkman Lane, if you guys go, like you guys say that you guys go around the city, if you guys go take a, a, a drive to my street, you guys are gonna see, it's a narrow street. There's really no space for anybody. And now, having Tempocantina right there just made it worse. And I'm just done with it. I go to other places for a pleasure, because here in the city of Downey, it's just nothing, everybody, you see trash everywhere, you see people driving like crazy. So, I have to go elsewhere to be able to have some pleasure. Why? I don't understand. I don't know what happened with the city, but I'm here to tell you guys, please do something about it. The city of Downey was such a nice place. I've been here for 20 years. I work for the, not I work for the city, but I work here in the city, and this is just unbelievable. And I know you guys probably don't know what to do, because you guys should have already taken Tempocantina or done something with them, because they're in a residential area anyways. So, we have to put up with that. But I actually have a solution for you guys. I've been to other cities where they have signs where it says only residents can park here. So, you guys could look into that. I don't care. If you guys don't want to put the wall, don't put the wall, but please put some signs, because it's unbelievable that we pay our house, our taxes here for the city, and there's no parking for, to be, and we cannot even park in front of our house. That's just crazy for me. And I would encourage all of you guys to go, take a look, and you guys could see for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We will definitely have staff look into that. Yes.
I was just wondering if the residents have considered applying for preferential parking for that street? Do we know that they've tried that?
I know they did, and they said that we had a paper.
Oh, sorry. We, we can have, we can have you have the conversation from the audience. Yeah, he's, he's asking staff.
So, we are just getting up to speed on this. I might have spoken with a prior city manager. Definitely something that I'll be looking into, reaching out to the residents and see what we can do out there, so.
Thank you. Yes. And without, without getting too much into it, I know Councilmember Sosa and I attended a Neighborhood Watch meeting out there recently, and we are, we are well aware, and we are looking into the situation. Thank you. This is Speaker number six.
Yes, good evening.
Thank you, good evening.
Just adding a few words for her comment. I'm living in Berkman Lane as well, and this is getting worse and worse. Not just the parking problem, it's just the crime, people drinking on my house and using drugs, and I seen that happening every weekend. Like she mentioned, we called the police, we brought it to you guys so many times, and never, nothing have done. So, I'm right here standing for help, because from the time that this place been open and our resident is getting worse and worse. So, we're just asking for help, because this is getting out of the hands. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you. We're making a note of that. Speaker number seven may come up.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Bradley and staff, good evening. Madam Mayor, I want to share some comments that, from a recent court session in a small Georgia town. The prosecutor, Mr. Williams, called his first witness, Mrs. Jones, and Mrs. Jones was an 85-year-old lady. And Mr. Williams asked Mrs. Jones, "Do you know me?" And Mrs. Jones says, "Yes, I do. I've known you since you were a youngster, and you've been a big disappointment to me. You're a liar, you cheat with your wife, and you talk about people behind their back. And you think you're a big deal, but you don't have the brains to know that you're nothing more than a two-bit paper pusher." "Yes, I do know you, Mr. Williams." So, Mr. Williams was stunned, and he didn't know what So Mr. Williams was stunned, and he didn't know what to do. So he asked Mrs. Jones, "Do you know the defense attorney?" And she says, "Yes, I do. I've known him since he was a youngster. He is a liar, a bigot. He also cheats with his wife, and his law practice is one of the worst in the city or in the county or the state of Georgia. And besides that, he also has cheated on his wife with three different women. And Mr. Williams, one of those women is your wife." So the judge called a recess, and he whispered, he called up the two counselors to talk to the judge. And the judge silently said, "Listen, you two idiots. If you mention to have Mrs. Jones refer to me, I will take your license away and put you away forever. All of this is a joke. Have a good evening."
Thank you, Mr. Lacy. Thank you. Speaker number eight may come up.
Hello, Mayor Frometta, council members, all civilians. I represent District One, and I just wanted to bring up a couple of issues that I think need to be addressed, and I need to be a voice for my district. One is the Circle K on Imperial and Benedict. I live right around that area. And the last couple of years, I've seen a lot of transients walking through that area more, more and more throughout the last couple of years. And I know Imperial is a very busy street. It goes all the way into Compton, really, and deep into LA over there. And I know a lot of people walk along that corridor to get into our city, so we just need to be more cognizant of that, please. And the police department is doing a great job. I'm just saying if we could keep our eyes open for that. It looks like some, some illegal activities going on there too, right in the parking lot. I go over there to get water and milk and things for my daughter, and I see the same guy out there giving stuff to people through their window. And it just looks very, it looks as though they're doing illegal activity there. Another area as well in District One is the thoroughfare between, it's on Woodruff, between Imperial and Firestone, right by Pete's, the restaurant. I've seen huge RVs camped out there for quite some time. I, I, days on end. And more cars that are parked there that people are sleeping within, their cars there. It's, I don't, it's illegal, one, and it's, it's not a good look. It's an eyesore. I'm sure that's been addressed quite a bit, but I've, I've seen that become worse as well. And then if we just could be more vigilant on Imperial. I, I, right there, right, where is it, where there's Carl's Jr., right by Schools First Bank, right there on Imperial, I always see, you know, some transients with a lot of baggage right there at the bus stops. So if we could do something there, that would be great, if we could help those people out. And of course, be very charismatic in our approach. I'm not trying to sound mean in any way. It, it's a big issue. People are going through some tough times. But at the same time, we need to make sure that our city is safe. I like how Mayor Bass references that. She says it very appropriately. She says, "A safer LA and a more livable LA." And I think that would help greatly. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I will make a motion to close public comment. Can I get a second?
Second.
So ordered by the mayor. Now is the time for consent calendar items. In regards to item number three on the consent calendar, the On Street Landscape Maintenance Services Agreement identified as recommendation number four within the agenda report will not be approved this evening and will be presented to the council at a future council meeting. Now, are there any council members that would like to remove or recuse themselves from any item?
I would, Mayor. I would like to abstain from the January 24th special meeting minutes, as I was not on the council.
Thank you, Councilmember Horn. Anyone else? Okay, I will now entertain a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar.
Second it.
Okay, please vote.
The consent calendar is approved with Councilmember Horn abstaining from item number one, specifically the council meeting minutes of January 24th, 2023.
Okay, thank you for that. There is one under Administrative Reports, item number 17. We've got one administrative report this evening, and that is to discuss parking issues as presented and proposed by Councilmember Horn and provide direction to staff regarding taking any additional steps to address the residential parking issues. And City Manager Bradley, I see our Director of Public Works, Matthew Baumgartner, ready to give a report.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Trujillo, and council members. At the council meeting of March 14th, 2023, Councilmember Horn highlighted a number of residential parking issues. Some of these related to private property issues. Others related to the proximity of residential, single-family neighborhoods to surrounding multifamily and commercial properties. One of the private property issues focused on the use of garages for storage, workshops, additional living space, and gyms. And staff has highlighted one potential solution involving preparing and sending a letter to remind residents in heavily impacted areas to consider opening up space in their garages to park their operational vehicles. Another private property issue brought up by Councilmember Horn included the use of driveways for parking RVs, campers, boats, and trailers. This is allowed in front and side yard areas, provided that access to garage or carports are not blocked, setbacks are not occupied, and that doors and windows are not blocked. Potential solution for this, similar to the garage use, reminders could also be sent to residents in heavily impacted areas to consider alternative storage and recreational vehicle lots off-site. Additional impacts from private property use include the operation of businesses from home. Currently, home-based businesses are required to obtain permits from the planning department to assess compatibility with residential neighborhoods. The code highlights that businesses, business use of garages cannot inhibit parking requirements on the property. And a potential solution is just continue enforcement of city regulations where home-based businesses may be violating parking rules and regulations. And finally, Councilmember Horn brought up issues regarding time restrictions for preferential parking districts, starting at 2:00 AM in many of the districts, and if this could be changed to a different time. Our code for establishing residential parking districts does not specify an actual timeframe. This is requested by the applicant. And currently, our staff works closely with the applicant, spending considerable amount of time to determine the timeframe based on the need of the neighborhood. In many cases, the need has been determined to be an overnight parking concern, and the desire is not to restrict residential use in the evening time. And in this case, 2:00 AM to 6:00 PM is a standard time referenced in the code for overnight parking restrictions outside of the parking preferential districts. So to be consistent with that overnight timeframe, 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM is typically used. This concludes this brief presentation on residential parking issues. With that, Madam Mayor, I return it over to you for any further discussion and questions that you might have, that the council might have, and any direction that council would like to provide to staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Really appreciate this report. I know with the growth of our city, we have certainly are seeing just tremendous issues with, with parking. And I know Councilmember Horn has definitely been very attentive and looking at mitigating a lot of these issues. Council colleagues, do you have any thoughts, questions, or comments regarding Matthew's presentation?
I have a question. Thank you, Matthew. This letter that would go out, is that basically a recommendation that they move their stuff out of their garage?
I mean, it's, if, if, if you're feeling the impact, that sort of the pain in your area that's heavily impacted, just a suggestion on some potential solutions that, that, that you could do. So looking at how you might be able to, you know, consider opening up your garage space if you have the ability to bring that, that car. Similarly, in the areas, if owners have recreational vehicles and they're using their property, they might be able to open up some space to bring those, you know, more, more vehicles onto their property. So it's just a suggestion essentially to, a potential way to alleviate some of that on your, on your own private property.
Okay, yeah, just, just confirming because we really have no business telling people.
No, no, absolutely not. It's just a suggestion on ways you might be able to alleviate the issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I, you know, they're, they're potentially, you know, good solutions, but I, I agree with Councilmember Sosa. I'm not sure, you know, people's private properties are people's private properties. I know we have parking issues, but I, I just, to me, I, that's, that's none of, you know, local government's business to be telling a homeowner what to do with their garage or how to utilize, you know, their space. I think that, you know, ideally, in an ideal world, we, we would like everybody to be cognizant of that, but I, I just don't feel comfortable moving in that direction. I just think that, that's, that's a bit of a, you know, government overreach.
One more thing.
Thank you for that direction.
Uh, one more, one more question, and also with respect to the people working in their garages. I mean, people are still working from home. You know, coming fresh off the pandemic, so not, not sure how we would, you know, step into that and maybe an overreach too.
Sure, I mean, these, these were actually outlined in our current code right now that, that prop, I mean, business, home-based businesses are required to obtain permits to determine compatibility with use in a residential area. So it's currently in our code, so it's something that.
So just, just to clarify, is there a difference between, in the code, between a home-based business and also an employee who's working for a business that's not theirs?
I think that my community developer might be able to answer that question a little bit better. But yes, there are certain standards about how you operate a home-based business. Employees can't impact parking and other things, generally speaking.
Theoretically, a, a home-based business is, is, has to operate within the confines of the code, which indicates basically a home-based business is not something that would see any activity really occur at the house. So you don't want a lot of deliveries happening, things like that. It does happen, but relatively minimal. So in, in regards to your question about occupying the garage, some businesses do do that. Whether or not we actually do an enforcement activity to, 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 we, we don't really go to that level of enforcement activity to, to have people, you know, deoccupy their garage.
And just as a, just to clarify too, we're happy to maintain the status quo as well.
Yes.
Yeah, because, and, and again, I think going back to, again, the, the driveways are sometimes used for parking recreational vehicles, campers, boats, and trailers. Again, if, if these, if the, if the parking of these vehicles, again, if they're not violating any city code, they are allowed in driveway areas. And, you know, as long as they're not, you know, blocking access, right? And they're not occupying a side setback. Again, I just, you know, there's such a fine line. I realize, we realize, we are having issues with parking. But if, if the, if the residents are maintaining and adhering to our city codes within the confines of their property, I have no business telling them what they can or cannot do within their property. That, to me, that's, that is not what local government ought to do. I think, you know, continuing to, I don't know, do some type of a marketing campaign of some sort. But again, I, I have, I have a problem telling people how to use their garage and, and what to park on their driveway. I just, that's, that's not something I believe we need to be meddling in, unless it's violating city code in, in some way, shape, or form.
Understood, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that comment.
That's all I have. Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, I got a, I got a lot of questions. I'm in agreement. When you're using your garage, I just want it to be known because you're allowed to do it on the law. When you're blocking the garage because you have a boat, an RV in place, that means you're taking up more than just the garage space with the driveway space. This is a resident problem, and they're allowed to do it. But I, I would be more hostile if they come to say, "I cannot park in my area" because you need to, the resident would need to fix their situation where they can use your garage and use your driveway rather than come to the city council and say, "I cannot park on my street." Well, this is a resident situation. You're allowed to do these things by law, and I accept that. But we cannot fix problems which the resident themselves or the community can fix. So I'm in full agreement here. It also, when I read through the, the driveway are sometimes used for, for RVs. We've talked about RVs, campers. We've made separate rules on that in prior, prior meetings. I think that the administration nailed this issue, and I think I'm, I'm following through on every solution that they have there. The only issues that I would have in that regard is probably would be something where you have that long driveway, you have the setback, but still you do not have enough parking. There is one other option there. It's going to the planning committee, having a hearing. And it's been done in the past where they pave part of their front lawn. However, planning does it, and they allow maybe one more spot before they have problems on the street. So that would be an issue that goes to, to the planning hearing and set up. If you can actually pave part of your front lawn or the backyard to have one or two more spaces. So that's an issue that has to be looked at from the resident and what the planning hearing comes down to. Other issues that I brought up. One was, and it's not mentioned here, over time, vehicles have become larger. And if you have a 1950 home with a single-car garage, it may not fit in the garage. You may have problems on the, on the driveway. So it's a concern that either maybe you had to rebuild and get a boarding permit. Maybe you should be conscious if you're renting or leasing the vehicle, not to get such a large vehicle where you cannot park it on the street in front of your house. If you have one of 50 homes, they're shorter, shorter driveways and shorter garage space. So that's a resident that has to really be more conscious of whatever they buy, rent, or lease. The last issue regarding the preferential parking. We've had complaints with this for months. I've talked to a number of those now in the preferential parking district. 2:00 AM, they're parking on the lawn, they're getting tickets. And one of the reasons why I wanted to extend it, and it fell true for me too. I work till 1:30 in the morning, and if I cannot park on my street, then that means I have to park somewhere. And I want to give them more leverage. They did not know when I talked to the residents of Corton and Volte. I did not talk to Buckles because it's the same issue in that area. But their parking on the lawns are getting tickets. I want to, them to have the opportunity to park in front of their house. I want to, them to have the opportunity to park in front of the house before any type of rental property or apartments come in, take their position. And that's why I proposed a 6:00 PM, because you're getting off of work, you have a chance to park there. 2:00 AM is just too, too late. If I have a regular job, I have to get up early. I can't go out and move my car at 2:00 o'clock in the morning just to get a parking space, just for four hours. So that's the reason why I want an expanded preferential parking standard. Standard, rather than the 2:00 AM, I want to expand it where they have some time during the late night to park before 2:00 AM. Otherwise, I'm running to a lot of nurses. They have the night shift. They're sleepy. I gotta park my vehicle. I have to either park the driveway, double park, whatever. But they have to go to bed. They're coming in 1:00 in the morning. You cannot park, you won't find a parking spot unless you expand the early preferential parking.
Anyone else? So on the parking restriction period for preferential parking districts starting at 2:00 AM, the suggestion is 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM? Is that the recommendation from staff?
I think from staff's perspective, and I know the Public Works Director can weigh in a little bit on this, there is an allowance, I believe, in the code if there's an individual need from a district to change something. They come to staff and they can be evaluated. Is that correct?
I think we're working very closely with them throughout the process. So if we are trying to determine what their needs are, if it's an overnight parking issue from the nearby multifamily properties, we're kind of working with them to determine exactly what the issue is. We go out into the field with them and spend a considerable amount of time with them on that. And then after the study is done, kind of working with them and answering, we will often receive questions from the other residents during the process as they're starting to gather the, because it requires seventy-five percent approval from the residents on the block. And so staff will receive questions from residents as they're being approached to sign the petition to see if this is consistent with what they want. During that time, if it's determined that that 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM is not working, then, yeah, to follow up with what City Manager Bradley is saying, we could alter that timeframe. The code doesn't specify an actual time. So if it's a desire to change it to be in a different timeframe, we can certainly do that. And that would be determined as we're going through the process with the applicant. So the process exists to do that.
On a case-by-case basis, we can kind of meet that.
Okay, yes. I like that. Councilmember Sosa.
Just a note on the proposed 6:00 PM start time. I mean, what if people, what if you have a Neighborhood Watch meeting? Or if one or two households have a few guests over for a gathering, I mean, what are you gonna do? That'd probably be a nightmare, trying to police that, and it just can't see that working.
Okay, at this point, if nobody else would like to comment, I think we will look at this on a case-by-case basis.
And it is available because you had to ask for it. And many of the residents on Volte and Corgan, they were shocked because they said, "This is what the city gave us. So this is all we expected. We didn't know that we could change the time." And that's why I wanted to change the standard of 2:00 AM to earlier time because you're gonna have a, what you don't know is there are two streets that have 24-hour non-parking. And it was put in by request. So as for patrolling it, they were always told to call in and report vehicles that are parked there. So that's on a call-in-by-call-in basis, rather than having the patrol come by. If they did happen to come by at midnight, then they would have the natural wherewithal to write a ticket if they wanted to, where it's 24 hours or before 2:00 AM, without anybody calling. That's if that's on a natural patrol. But if you really needed some of these streets, and we've heard additional comment today, we're really jam-packed. We got nothing to do. We can't do anything. Maybe preferential parking is not, because preferential parking has to be someone outside of the residential street before you qualify for that. So that might be a different issue for them. If it's just resident, like we've indicated before, then it's a resident issue for the street. But if it's coming from the surrounding community, then that is not the direct resident or homeowner that's asking for that special parking area.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Horn. Thank you, Matthew. I think at this point, we will, again, take this on a case-by-case basis and no further action on this particular item. If there's nothing else, this city council meeting is now adjourned in memory of Scott County Deputy Sheriff Caleb Conley, who perished in the line of duty, and St. John's County Sheriff Sergeant Michael Kunovich, who perished while on duty. Please, a moment of silence. It is 8:22. This meeting is adjourned.